Good afternoon. We're going to call the City Council meeting for the city of Indio at four o'clock for our closed session. Could we have roll call please?
For the record, all council members are present except for Councilmember Whiton.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number two now, which is public comments. Is anybody in the queue that wishes to speak? Sabdi or anybody here?
I have none, Mayor.
Okay, nobody wants to jump up and talk. We'll leave that then. Move on to item number three, which is adjourn the closed session to consider item 3.1.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, we have one item. Conference with rural property negotiators pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.8. Properties: Noble Ranch, APN 614650001 through 06. Negotiating parties are the city of Indio, our city manager, and HCL Indio Land Development. And what is what we're going to be speaking about is price in terms of payment.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll adjourn to closed session.
Alrighty.
Good evening, everyone. We're gonna start the meeting for the City Council for the city of Indio. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Wietron.
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz.
Present.
Councilmember Farman.
Present.
Mayor Protem Holmes.
Present.
And Mayor Miller.
Present. At this time, if you could all rise, Councilmember Gutron is gonna give our invocation, and then we're gonna have a special person do our flag salute.
Lord, please bless over this council and community as we make decisions today specifically in our finances for the coming budget year. Along with that is give us the help, the support, and guidance to make the best decisions we can as we move forward into our new budget year, and that the community continues to gather, continues to appreciate, and know what the city is becoming from what it is there today till it will be tomorrow. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Gutron. If you could still stand. A very special guest can do our flag salute. Hazel Romero from Madison Elementary School. Hazel is a first grade student with passion for cheerleading, dancing, and singing. A fun fact about Hazel is that she's a proud member of the Mavericks Cheer Team. How are you? Welcome! Gonna get the music going. It's yours whenever you're ready.
Take your hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Oh, she's too cute. Come on. You have a hand for something. Turn around this way. Thank you, and thank you, Hazel. With that, we'll move on to our City Attorney Report on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, we have no reportable action this evening.
Thank you very much. Now, we have a very special presentation. We have the chief of the day, Mr. Mason Terry. Chief Tully, are you in charge, or is Mr. Mason in charge?
Mayor. Mayor, today I'm the Assistant Chief. I have Chief Terry here. He's been the chief for a day. I wanted to thank you very much for having me here, Mayor Protem, City Council. Today's a special day for us. What we did is we offered kind of a fundraiser for Desert Christian Academy was to be a chief for a day. And so they were able to bid on the, on the position, and Chief Terry here was the one who was selected. Anyways, Chief Terry, will you come up here for a minute? Chief Mason Terry is nine and a half years old, and we wanted to welcome him, welcome him to the Indio Police Department family. He is a fourth grade student at Desert Christian Academy. He's a bright young gentleman that is enthusiastic about his education and hopes to enter into the US Navy when he graduates from high school. He is joined today by his parents, Mike and Christine Terry. One little note I would like to note is that he is a great grandson, great grandson of one of our captains or lieutenant, lieutenant. Yep, yeah, Lieutenant Terry many, many years ago worked for the police department. I found out this morning that he was connected to the police department in this way. We did not know that before we met him this morning. So, pretty exciting. So, we went ahead and I have some, some items to give him. Council, will you come on down, please?
Sure. We'd love to.
Join us in this?
We have a couple other people wanna present some stuff also.
All right. Okay, before you get your speech, I'm gonna give you this commendation. This commendation is a chief's commendation, and it's presented to Mason Terry, chief for the day. It's, we just wanted to recognize your service to our community, your willingness to go above and beyond to help others, and to your dedication to your family. So, here you go. Here's this certificate. Hold on to that. I also wanna present this picture that, that is, that has been in our department for many, many years, and it actually has his great grandfather, Lieutenant M. Terry. So, here, you could put it up in your room as well. So, Mason, you'll be able to put that in your room and look back, okay? I'll give that to you in a few minutes. All right, you're up. Give us your speech.
Good morning, Mayor. Wait, is it done? Good evening, good evening, Mayor, um, city council members and everyone here tonight. My name is Chief Mason Terry, and I am in the fourth grade. Today, I had an amazing honor to be sworn as the fifth honorable chief of police for the Indio Police Department. And today, I will never forget. This experience was extra special for me because my great grandfather was once captain of the Indio Police Department, so it meant a lot to walk in his footsteps, and even just for a day. After I sworn and I got to do some really cool things, I went, I went through field training with Chief Tully, who even gave me my very own police hat that made the whole day super memorable. I wore, I wore it proudly all day long. I got a tour of the police department and City Hall, and I met some, met many, so many people who were kind and welcoming. I felt like I was one of the team. people who were kind and welcoming. I felt like I was one of the team. It, like, a true, like, I truly belonged there. Thank you, everyone who helped this day, um, make this day so great. Thank you for trusting me with the honor and for making me feel right at home. It was a pleasure serving the city of Indio today. I'll always remember it.
Well, I couldn't have said that better, Chief Terry. Well done, sir. All right, let's get some pictures with everybody.
Welcome. Chief Terry, don't leave yet. We have a few things still to give to you. Mr. Gutron?
Well, it takes me great pleasure to give you some stuff to memorialize your grandfather. I've had the privilege of knowing some of your family, but I didn't get the privilege to know your grandfather. After spending forty years with the police department your grandfather served with, there's a little bit of historical stuff that you need to know. Chief Cunningham hired your father, and he became good friends with him and mentored him along the way, eventually retiring as captain from Indio Police Department. The ground that you stand on is formerly an office that held the police department, and next door was City Hall. Your grandfather walked these grounds quite often. Along with that, when he retired, he did retire as a rank captain, and he was well-liked by the staff, well-liked by the, and then policemen, later became police officers. But I was, I spoke to a few, and I asked them to tell me, that are still around that remember your grandfather, what would you say about him? And they said this, "A humble man, well-supported, and a good leader." So, hopefully, you can go walk away today with some pride knowing that. Along with that, what I'd like to do, I'm kinda with a history buff in the department and the city. So, your grandfather wore this patch. It's called the Taj Mahal Patch. That's served very proudly for many years. It's proudly the second most served patch. The current patch is the longest patch that we've ever worn, that you see the men and women of the Indio Police Department wear. And for a short time, there's a photo of one of your relatives with a great homicide case your grandfather was involved in, and he wore this patch, and that's the same style patch that's in one of the pictures that your family members have from a story that hit nationwide of a homicide that occurred in Indio. Good job, best wishes, and thank you for being chief of the day.
But we're not done yet. We have Jose Asparza here from Assemblyman Jeff Gonzalez's office that has a couple of things for you. Jose?
Well, good afternoon, everybody. We talk a lot about tradition, and we talk a lot about our roots. First, I wanna say thank you to the family that's here today, support. Obviously, he didn't have the stream by himself. He understands where he came from. He understands who he is. It's very impressive to see a young man be able to take that leadership, be in this position today. To you, Mr. Terry, I gotta say, you have done an outstanding job, from what I hear from the city. We also wanna thank the beautiful city of Indio. That's a lot for this to happen, and to our previous chief, Tully. Now?
He might get back up there.
He might get back up here sometime. To give you the opportunity to do this, don't forget where you came from. Don't forget what you're carrying in your hand. Don't forget to say thank you to those who helped you. Don't forget to help the ones that don't always get to help you. Agreed? Thank you, sir. On behalf of Assemblyman Jeff Gonzalez and Senator Steve Padilla, I have two certificates for you congratulating you on this momentous occasion. Thank you so much.
Representative, take a picture. Let's give him a round of applause. Chief Terry, thank you for serving. Chief Tully, thank you for bringing this to us, and for all the city council and the family. Thank you very much for allowing us to borrow your son as our police chief for a day. I would ask the chief for the chief pay for the day, but that's me. Thank all of you. Okay. We'll wait for you. There's nothing going on.
Gonna be the coolest guy on the campus for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two great young adults, gonna become great, great kids, very fortunate in this city. With that, well, now that the chief's left us, we will move on to item number seven because the Youth Advisory Council is off. We'll move on to item number seven, which is the City Manager Report and Information. Mr. Montgomery?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. There is a lot going on, but I, I always like to highlight the events that we'll have this week. So, on Thursday evening, we'll have Moana this coming Thursday, the twelfth, at six thirty P.M., great movie at Center Stage. The free Second Saturday Concert will be Saturday, the fourteenth, at six P.M. And of course, we're here every Friday for Food Truck Fridays right here across the street, and we have a new art installation there that everyone seems to be enjoying.
Yep.
Very dramatic and fitting for our revitalizing downtown. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Yeah, the Food Truck Fridays is really gathering a following. I was in Ranch Mirage yesterday at an event, and they were, you know, commenting on how many of their residents have talked about them having something similar, that how cool it was, and what great food and great entertainment was. So, our hats off to not only the staff, but also Tony Romero and all the people that help us. I mean, we don't do it alone. It's really a work of everybody else, but the actual art pieces and all that stuff just adds to the, the culture of this, the city. So, thank you. With that, we'll move on to item number eight, which is the City Council Conflict of Interest Disclosure. Does anybody have anything they need disclosed? I know Mayor Protem stepped out for a second, but she said she did not have anything. So, with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is the reports on meetings, commissions, and boards. Mr. Gutron?
Well, just a couple of things that have been community interest. Attended the Amistad High School on May twenty-seventh, and attended the Indio High School graduation, which was on the, God, I can't remember right now. It was May twenty-ninth. Both events outstanding. I was not able to attend Shadow Hills High School, but I can tell you that there is a large amount of young adults that have graduated into our communities, into schools, into future livelihoods, and it seems like all well-prepared. I think that Indio should be very proud to celebrate the graduation of our community's children, and now young adults into the adult world, and we wish them the best. But I'm very grateful to have ten, at least two out of three. Along with that, there was also Memorial Day at the Coachella Valley Public Cemetery District, me and members of council. It was another great opportunity to celebrate our veterans. That event seems to be fine-tuned every year and well-represented of our veterans of not just Indio, but members of the Coachella Valley who laid their rest there, which I have two of my members of my family that are veterans that died of old age, but served their country. It's just nice to see the support of our veterans in our community and how well-supported they are from Indio, and knowing the fact that someday soon we'll have our own memorial in Indio and talking to the mayor and the rest of council that, that we hope to see someday soon. Along with that, something very special at the McCollum Theater this past Sunday. It was started at two o'clock. They had the privilege of attending because one of our granddaughters participated. But it may be realized that the Center Stage Dance Company, the studio that's here located in Indio off Dr. Carrion, has over two hundred participants in that program, and almost seventy percent of those participants, the young ladies knowing the arts of dance, come out with a lot of talent. They must've had at least five hundred people at the McCollum. I know that there's other members of the city staff that have family members that are attending that. But it's something to brag about because it represented Indio. It represented the hard-working of these young children, from the little tiny tots all the way to high school students, and I can see them moving on, those that love the, the performing arts, but the talent, and it's coming here from Indio, and I think it's something that we need to be bragging about. The Center Stage Company has been here twenty-five, but formerly was Miss Julie's, and so you probably have over maybe forty-five to fifty years of dancing instruction coming from our city, in this little studio that started not where it's at now, but it's, no, it's moved at least three locations throughout Indio to what it is today. But it's nice to be able to brag, along with everything else that's going on in our lovely city. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Gutron. Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended the graduations for Amistad, Indio High School, and Shadow Hills High School. Wanna congratulate all of our graduates and their families on reaching that milestone, and we wish them all the best on their future plans for their careers. Last week, I also attended the C.B. USD State of the District with Councilmember Holmes, where we heard about what the teachers and the leadership are doing there to improve the education of our local students. We saw some great presentations on what they're learning, including projects on renewable energy and virtual reality. I also attended the Memorial Day Event with all of our council at the Coachella Valley Cemetery. I wanna thank Josh Bonner and his staff at the cemetery for hosting us, and also a big thank you to the American Legion, the VFW, and all the other local veteran organizations for supporting our, our local veterans at these events and throughout the year. I, I actually met with a Vietnam veteran named Charles Holland at the lunch following the ceremony, and we've been talking about doing some kind of memorial this year for the fiftieth anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War. Staff joined me in a meeting today with some of those veterans, so we're looking at ways that we can help them fundraise for some of their activities and support their efforts of getting services to our local veterans. I also had a meeting with College of the Desert, a two-by-two meeting with Councilmember Wietron. We met with the new superintendent and talked about ways that we can collaborate with their campus here right across the way. Some of those dots were how our staff can access childcare at their Child Development Center, how we can partner on security measures in the downtown area, and how we can open up career pathways for COD students here at our City Hall. Other than that, just wanna remind everybody to attend our movie night, which is gonna be this Thursday. We'll be showing Moana, so I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farman?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick one. I did to attend the graduations. I missed Amistad. I was out of town, but I did attend Indio High School and Shadow Hills High School. Congratulations to all the graduates. And if you look online, there's been a lot of schools graduating, not just our local schools. We had a lot of College of Desert had a nursing program that graduated. We have a lot of kids around the valley, just different programs. So, congratulations to everyone. Like it was mentioned earlier, it's another generation of young people who are the future of our city and our, and our valley. So, it was just great seeing all the celebrations going in the valley of all the graduates, and I also attended the Memorial Day Ceremony at C.B. Cemetery, another great event that was put on by, you know, our local veterans. All showed up, a lot of council members, elected officials throughout the valley. The community always shows up and supports our veterans. Our mayor, our chief of police was there. Indio is always well-represented there, and it's just another one of those days where we're just reminded of the sacrifices that people made for us to have this beautiful city and a great quality of life, and a safe quality of life as well. So, thank you to everyone who put that together. And this morning, I also attended a career day from at La Quinta Middle School. Thank you to Principal Kristen Wood for having me. Another great event. Always love talking to kids. It's fun to talk about being a correction officer and how I came into being a council member, and the kids really liked Indio, and I, I asked a lot of the kids, you know, have you been to Food Truck Friday? Yes. Have you been to Tamale Festival? They loved it. Some of the youngsters even been to Stagecoach in Coachella. So, it was real cool to talk about our festivals. Movie night, they've been to movie night, and I think right now the most popular thing that they really love is we have canes in Indio. And so, my used canes at Texas Roadhouse describe my district, and, and also, we talked about the mall. A lot of kids, even though they're in La Quinta, they wanted to know about the India mall. Are we gonna build that? And so, I got to explain to them the processes that we've been through and what we're going through now. They love the artwork downtown, and they come to Food Truck Friday. So, it's real, it's real nice to hear from the kids in a neighboring city, and one of the questions, one of the students asked, is how did we get more involved in our city? And I explained to them that we have the Youth Advisory Committee here in our city. The county has theirs, but I told them, I said, "If you go to laquinta- I believe it's laquinta.org, you can email Mayor Lena Evans, and she'll give you all the directions," because I'm pretty sure she will love to interact and engage with their youth over there in La Quinta. And so, another great day, a lot of great presenters. We were talking about earlier, someone had a falcon, is it, or a hawk that was there. So, I got to see that. IID was there. We had a lot of businesses there from the valley. So, another good career day, but it's another good end to the year, and, you know, like was mentioned earlier, we have budget season now, and that just shows that we're in the middle of the year, and we're looking forward to next year. So, that would complete my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Farman. Mayor Protem Holmes?
Okay, and you know, we're all out and about. It's really great. I also attended the graduations for Amistad and Shadow Hills, but it's so nice just to see these young adults going on to the next phase of their, their life with hopes and dreams. I mean, when we were standing next to each other, Mayor, there at Shadow Hills, we had the chance. We were shaking hands with all of them, Councilmember Ortiz as well, and we were all asking, "What are you doing? Where are you going?" And there was just, there was such pride and energy about all the different places, about their plans, about their careers, their lives, their families. It's just really refreshing to see. Let's see, what else did I do? I attended, as Councilmember Ortiz mentioned, the State of the City for C.B. USD. It was just really wonderful to see how that school district is pulling together, and the superintendent there talked about how they're teaching their kids, how they're reaching their kids with, with the concept of neuroscience and using some of those skills to, to then teach these kids to bring out their capability. And she had an interesting process, and she said, "You know, everyone's a champion. Every kid that goes through our school district is a champion. We need to, to bring it out in them. We need to figure out what their champions at, and we need to help them understand that and help them grow into that." And I thought that was really great. Some very good presentations there as well. Also, the Memorial Day Event, also with the mayor at Sun City Shadow Hills and at the C.B. Cemetery. It's just always great. There's just large numbers of people out there supporting our veterans and, and supporting the Memorial Day Services. I had fun because I got to attend our mini MBA graduation, and so that was just really the highlight of my day. City of Indio offers this mini MBA program for our small businesses. This is the inaugural, the very first program, and thirteen people went through, spending four hours a day through several weeks of learning how to, all the tools to be a better business people, business person, and how to be successful, and how to do their finances, and how to manage, and how to market, and all the, all the tools that you need to start a business, to sustain a business, and to be successful in that environment. They were very excited. It was a very exciting evening. I, the mayor allowed me on his behalf to hand out the certificates for the city of Indio, so that was, that was really terrific to see these new business people with all their energy somewhere already business people out in the world with some new tools to be successful. Also attended the Women's Club Luncheon. This is the time of year when we give out scholarships. We gave out twenty-five thousand dollars worth of scholarships to several kids, or only to Indio kids. So, Shadow Hills High School, Indio High School, Amistad, they all got scholarships, and then one for Empowering Women. So, particular individual had, had kids and was working and so on and so forth, but now had the opportunity to go back to follow her dream, which is to get a nursing degree. So, she received a scholarship. Also, gave out scholarships to several of the organizations, you know, the Rescue Mission and, and the IPD K-9 Unit. Apparently, the Women's Club has been giving, donating to the K-9 Unit for many, 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 many years, well beyond twenty years, and so that was always great to see as well. Let's see, what else did I have? Something fun, and I know Councilmember Ortiz was a part of it, so I have, I have the advantage of being downtown most of the time, and I saw a tour bus pull up, and I kinda can't resist, could not resist, right? So, I walked over to the coffee shop, and it turns out there was a Tourism Foundation that, that was giving a tour of the journalists. There were probably about ten people, and they were from all over the country. They were as close as Monrovia. They were from L.A. They were from Omaha. They were from Pittsburgh. They were as close as Monrovia. They were from LA. They were from Omaha. They were from Pittsburgh. They're everywhere and they were here for a, not so much a convention, but a meeting of all the journal, journalists, of journalists. And, uh, and so they were doing a mural tour. So they had an organization, they had someone that pulled the information about all of our murals. And, and they were doing a mural tour and they were loving it. They absolutely loved, um, what everything happening in the city. They liked the different murals. They liked the variety of the murals. Uh, the today, a second tour came through, uh, and I know they stopped at the Dizzy Mural and then you were there. And they were just so excited that they connected with a couple of council members, um, on their little, on their little tour. And then, uh, thank you to staff. They put together really at the last minute, these little goodie bags. And they were absolutely thrilled to bits and they just thought Indio, um, was really this great place because it had character. It had interest and it had businesses, uh, in the city limits that were unique and unlike businesses anywhere else. So that was really terrific to hear. Uh, let's see what else. Lastly, um, uh, I had the transportation session, so I had to go to one of my commissions. And, uh, and we got to talk about something fun, which is the Arts and Music Line Project. Fortunately, they're asking for almost another million dollars, nine hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. Construction costs are just, it feels like they're growing, going up on a daily basis. But they're planning on starting, uh, construction in twenty-twenty-seven and completing it by twenty-twenty-nine. Um, and, and there'll be protected bike lanes. And I guess as a result of this, um, there, there, there's also going to be improvement in our bike lanes throughout segments of our city. Nine miles, it's nine miles along Avenue Forty-eight. So it's going to be really exciting to have the ability. It's going to go along by some of the schools and, and to end up down by the concerts. So even when the concerts aren't there, there's going to be some great bike paths. So looking forward to that, uh, starting. And then there was a, this is really special. They were, um, talking about the pavement, giving a presentation on pavement management. And so they showed this map. And I, I have to tell you, so when I came here twenty years ago, I don't think there was a street that was fully paved. It was really interesting. And it was so nice to see green lines throughout Indio. And it was even nicer for just about everyone on that commission to say, Indio's got the best paved streets. If I could, I, there's got to be a recording of that. Yeah, it was really wonderful. And, and people were talking about, um, how, you know, how, how their, their, as each city grows up, as each city gets these funding, the funds, how they're going to be working on their pavement. By the way, La Quinta is going to be paving, uh, Highway One-eleven that's due to start within the next month. So that'll be a nice extension to what we've done on Highway One-eleven there, uh, near Jefferson. So it was just really terrific. We've worked very hard. Um, you know, thank you to our constituents for approving Measure X. Now I think it's Measure E. Uh, because without that, we could not have completed this. Thank you to, to staff, to Public Works, to everyone that has been a part of this. And, and really beautified our city and made it a great place for people to drive through. So it was really, again, it was really wonderful to hear. And Mayor, that ends my comments.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I had a couple of committees that were active. One is Sebag Executive. We talked about the budget for this year and all the capital improvements. It's a little tight this year, especially for transportation dollars. Uh, it's gone down quite a bit. Uh, Indio is still the two main, um, transportation, uh, items, projects that they're looking at. So that's good. Uh, we also discussed the new power, uh, commission that we approved that we're, and in a little while, we're going to put the two committees on. They wanted to have a meeting, uh, next week, so we, we'll be able to, uh, get our appointees on there and we'll get out to them. Uh, Sunline, we did our budget, our basic budget, like, like the city of India is. Uh, every, all the committees and commissions are doing their budgets to make sure they were done. Balanced budget of about forty-five million dollars for Sunline, about a hundred and twenty some in capital improvement. Most of it being buses and buildings that they're doing throughout, uh, the region. And then, uh, Amalgagated Transit Union, ATU, we did an agreement with them and about eleven percent. Uh, we have a three-year agreement with them to be able to, uh, continue our work with them. There's about two hundred and thirty-eight employees that are in that union that we had an agreement with last year. Or last time it dragged out for almost a year. This time we got it done before this one ended, so that was good to see. Uh, also the graduations, very, very nice to see all the kids graduate. A great crop of, of young adults that came out, four hundred and forty-one at Indio High School, three hundred and eighty at Shadow Hills, a hundred and eighteen at Amistad. Amistad always touches the heart. A lot of these kids went through a lot of diversity to get what they are and just a great group of, of kids. And then we're also tomorrow going to be honoring Derek Lawson. The, the principal is leaving. He's retiring, uh, after forty years of, uh, service to our community. He's going to be retiring and we're having an event for him over at the Indio High School Gym tomorrow to be able to recognize him and thank him for his service. And I'm sure he's not going very far, but, uh, he's going to be missed as the, uh, principal at the Indio High School. And you could tell by the, the, uh, kids and the staff at, uh, at that, the ceremony, how much they were, uh, cared for him and loved him. So that was great to see. Uh, also the Veterans Day Events. I, I was fortunate enough to be able to speak at the Veterans Club for, um, Shadow Hills. Done it many a times. A good friend of mine who was the, the first, uh, finance, uh, commissioner for me was Mr. Tom Hudson. Was the Colonel from the US Army. He's passed on. I miss him dearly. Very good man, very intelligent, uh, worked in the Pentagon for many years. And it's been, uh, five years since he passed on and we were able to recognize him at that event. And, you know, Shadow Hills has a rich culture of veterans there. So there was probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred people there that were recognizing the, uh, the veterans. And then also, uh, the cemetery, CV Cemetery, how can you not recognize all our veterans from VFW, American Legion Hall, the, uh, VFW and American Legion Hall Riders Association and all the other ones. And Josh in the Cemetery District, they continue to support our, our veterans. And every year they are the host of our, uh, our Veterans Ceremony for Memorial Day. And then, you know, years round, they, they continue to support our, our veterans. But also with that bringing up, uh, City Manager, I know we, uh, have our beam that we had, that we were talking about putting out in front of the second phase of our police station. And we looked at not being able to do it. Um, that beam sat there for a long time from nine eleven, and I know we talked about another spot. And with the council's permission, I'd really like to see what we can do about moving forward to get a, a location that we can start in on that, not only for our veterans, uh, our five, six branches when you had, uh, in the new Space Force, but also, uh, you know, National Guard, but also our first responders. Uh, I'd like to be able to get that memorial up, get that beam out so that we can highlight that and show, uh, not only what nine eleven meant to, to so many people, but that we don't forget. So if we could maybe look into where we can, uh, find a location that has good parking along with good, um, access to it, uh, that'd be great if we could do that. Everybody's permission.
Absolutely.
Mr. Kachan, did you need?
No, just say, just something where it's good visibility, like most of the cities have done, something special in India.
Yeah, I, I think in all our, our veterans and first responders that live here and have worked for us and put them on the, uh, the monuments throughout the, the, uh, presentation, I think is going to be a big, for people to go, like you said, the captain here, it's so exciting for them to. And you could see the, the grandmother crying about, uh, you know, the patches and everything else. I think it's, it's great to see and I think we need to recognize not only our veterans, but our first responders on a continual basis. And I think the city of India is the largest city and the oldest city should, uh, lead. So I appreciate that. With that, we'll move on to now item ten, which is the appointment of the Indian Board Member and Alternate Board Member for the Coachella Valley Power Agency. And do we have any volunteers? Our recommendations?
I nominate Councilmember Wayman Furman to be the lead.
I, I, I accept that. And do we have an alternative?
That would be me.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second on, uh, Councilmember Furman being our board member and Mayor Protem being our alternative. Please vote. Pass unanimously five-zero. Thank you. The meeting's next week. So you could be able to get up to speed if you can send that over to Tom and make sure we, uh, roll through this. Thank you for volunteering. And we're going to move on to item number eleven now, which is the consent count. We have item eleven-one through eleven-six. Does anybody like to pull anything or have any comments?
I'm motion to approve.
And we have first by Councilmember Ortiz. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Furman. Please vote. Pass unanimously five-zero. With that, we'll move on to our, our largest item, which is the administrative item, which is the City Resolutions Number One-oh-four-nine-two, One-oh-four-nine-three, One-oh-four-nine-four. Uh, India Housing Authority Twenty-Twenty-five-Twenty-Six, India Water, uh, Authority Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-five-dash-eight-two, and India Electric Finance Authority Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-five-dash-oh-two. Operating and capital improvement budgets, appropriations, limit and citywide classification and compensation plan, the operating budget for the India Housing Authority, the operating and capital budget for the India Water Authority, and operating budget for the India Electric Finance Authority. Ms. Wall, are you handling this now that I spit all that out?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. Ruby Walla, Director of Finance for the City of Indio. Um, happy to be here today, honored, privileged to present to you the, um, Twenty-Five Twenty-Twenty-Six Recommended Budget for the City of Indio. Um, before we get started, I just want to commend staff, um, all together collaboratively with this team. Um, we are able to present you with a balanced budget today for the city and for the India Water Authority. Um, and you know, it's a, it's a feat and, uh, it's a great work, um, working with these individuals. So we have a presentation for you today that I will walk through. So today's agenda is actually to present, review, um, and review the various budgets. The citywide budget, um, and as stated for the general fund, the water authority, we'll be adopting resolutions for the housing authority, including the India Electric, um, Finance Authority as well as the India Water Authority. And then the goal, of course, and the intent is that, um, we would recommend approval of the budget and looking forward, um, council's adoption. So we'll get started. As far as the citywide budget, um, as a whole and in its entirety is looking at four hundred and fifty-nine million, all-inclusive of all activity throughout the budget, throughout the city. And that includes significant transfers, um, internal transfers as well. Um, big changes that, that we have here, um, general, the general fund has pretty been about one-twenty, one-twenty-three. Um, we're at one-twenty-nine, um, and we'll walk through what some of those changes are. But significantly, there's some, um, rollover, um, that we'll see about six million. We have our special revenue funds, which usually comprise significantly of the majority of the LLDs that we manage, about fifty-four LLDs that we have, um, inclusive of gas tax, Measure A. Um, and then we have our Ca- Capital Projects Fund, which that is a very robust aggressive schedule, which continues many rollover projects, um, and we'll go through some of the significant pieces there. And then we have debt service, uh, there as well at the one point one million. And we'll talk about the proprietary funds and the internal service funds and all those funds that, um, support the city, uh, throughout. And then our enterprise funds, which is primarily, um, reflective of our golf, uh, municipal golf activity and then our lease, uh, employee leases to the, between the city and IWA. And then again, continuing the citywide budget is all of our assessment districts and all our, uh, debt obligations here that are recognized, including as you recall, last year we comprised IWA in this, in this number here. And as well as you'll see, the India Finance, uh, Electric Finance Authority is a big component of this. Um, what that signifies, and that's why the budget overall is, is significantly increased. And you have a separate resolution to adopt that budget on behalf of the authority. Um, and that is inclusive of those, um, final milestone payments that we will be paying to IID for the infrastructure as well as any debt service payments that are generated. And again, none of those resources come in. IID collects those surcharge fees on our behalf and everything it is, uh, is administered through the trustee. So what went into the budget, um, just an overview of all of our budget, budget assumptions. We did have some conservative revenue projections, some that you'll see and that we'll highlight is, as we discussed at the study session. Um, we seemed a little bit more optimistic on our sales tax based on just trending information. So we did take that into consideration and we dialed that back a bit within this new proposed budget. Um, salary and benefit adjustments, ongoing adjustments have been made just based on as merits come about or, um, as we've moved forward. And so we get to close to actual, um, as we can to get a better picture moving into the Twenty-Five Twenty-Six year. We were, we're reflective of all any MOU obligations, um, for any benefit packages for employees or any of that nature that are agreed upon between a bargaining groups. Those are all assumed. Debt service obligations, um, we do have an increase being presented in here in our debt service obligations, our lease revenue bonds. Uh, Twenty-Twenty-two lease revenue bonds that has gone up. That is a, um, contribution and a commitment of Measure X dollars that we have. So that's actually gone up to six million in the proposed budget this year as a contribution. And as discussed, we have some rollo-, the capital rollover projects, some inter, interdepartmental operational projects that are also included. And again, continuation of just the existing capital plan. So first we'll talk about general fund revenue. And as I alluded to, um, we made some just minor changes from the, uh, study session that was held on May seventh. Um, it's significant to sales tax, Measure X, property tax, um, utility user tax and TOT. In terms of that, just made some minor adjustments there. So the overall impact to your tax, um, increase base was at eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, um, year over, year-over-year change. So use of assets, that is also the, um, that had some changes in it, um, that we reflected. And then, then charges for services. And I will just have to say, especially when it comes to festivals, right? Um, it shows that we had a great festival season, but we don't, you know, any given year, based on the activity, based on the popularity, based on the lineup. Um, last year being year one, I think I held back really, really conservative until I got my fillers for everything. Um, but seeing the way it's performed and, and learning more of the scale of all the, um, ins and outs with, um, that relationship, we have made those reflective adjustments here. And at any time, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Um, and this is just to give you an overall tax revenue base as far as some of the, uh, where we're at looking at revenue. And as you can tell, and I hate to see when we have like, um, you know, especially in the, the other slide. But if you look here, revenues are really flattening out and you see how significant they just in the recovery. Um, so that really tells the story, but it also tells the story that, you know, we're kind of at where we've peaked. And we did talk a little bit at the study session in regards to, you know, our revenues are, are flattening out, not increasing. And we're at that opposite end now where our, um, expenditures are increasing at a higher rate than what our revenue generation is. So those are things that we are looking at and, and, um, paying, paying close attention to. The, these slides are rather small, so I apologize for that. And I, I do try not to be so much of a, uh, spreadsheet person on there. But this just one, I wanted to highlight, these are all the changes that occurred from your, the May seventh study session, um, to today. What got us here today and what are the most significant changes for you to be able to preview as far as what we did and what we took charges, we left. And like I said, um, we have adjustments to salaries and benefits and ISF changes. And that's significant throughout all of your departments within the general fund and all categories. And things that we've made significantly that drove those is that we did take a look at the ISF allocations, the internal service fund allocations for all of those activities. And in the internal service funds, you know, we have, um, risk management, fleet, buildings and grounds, vehicle replacement, um, and so forth, that, and IT. And so what we did is look, we looked at those allocations and we also wanted to ensure that they were self-sufficient, right? So that they were recouping and covering the costs. And so there were some adjustments there that actually, um, reflected, um, costs that are one-time rollover projects that we've already kind of captured that through that allocation. So that's what was the driving force for the majority of those.
So this is a one-time occurring, uh, credit, basically, going down in the ISFs?
Yes.
Just, just this one time?
Yes.
That won't be recurring every year?
Yes.
And then what is the hundred and forty-one thousand dollars for human resources?
So that was a change we did in the budget and we'll get there to the authorized position list. And that had to do where we have, uh, an intern, citywide intern and fellowship program. And where the city has been actively, um, either acquiring interns or fellows. And so what we thought was best is rather than assigning it to a specific department, in any given year, we can have a number, depending on the poll, they can be assigned to any department. So we are housing it within the, um, HR department. So that is what's driving that cost.
Thank you.
These are just the changes for the other departments. Um, again, the same, the same, um, situation there. The, the one that I wanted to call your attention to on here would only be, um, where you see streets, maintenance and operations. That's also rel- related to authorized positions. That is accounting for two part-time, um, community programmings. And what that is, is a collaborative effort between PD and Public Works to assist with code enforcement efforts. And in exchange, they've also looked with And in exchange, they've also looked within their operational budgets to also have those positions.
One more, if I could?
Yeah, of course.
City manager, on this thing, and I'm bringing this up now because the animal control. Not only do I not think we should give them a hundred thousand dollars, I also think we should take money back. We're supposed to be having three people in the city of what we're paying for almost a million dollars. And we don't have three people in the city. And so they really need to justify the raised rates on this thing. And I know that Jonathan's been working on this, but if we're not able to get the amount of people that we're supposed to have in the city, then we, it's coming upon us to cut back. And I know they have the only game in town, so it makes it very difficult. But if we're paying for three officers, the animal control officers to be here, then we need three officers. And if they can't prove it, then they need to take money off. We don't need to pay for Coachella, we don't need to pay for the county, we don't need to pay for anybody else. We need to pay for the City of Indio. And I can only see this thing going up. And if I don't think we take a stand now, I think next year, they're going to come up with another hundred thousand. And the year after that, they're going to have to come up with another hundred thousand. And we're just going to keep paying for it. And I, I really don't care what the rest of the other cities say. They want to help pay for it, more than happy to, love the animals, but I think we need to really look at this.
Yeah, it's a great point. And, and as you mentioned, the Assistant City Manager has been working with them, met with them just today, or was it yesterday?
Yes, Mr. Montgomery, I met with them yesterday afternoon, met with the new animal care director, Mary Martin. And so as you're, you're very correct, Mayor, there's two components to the contract. There's a sheltering component and then there's animal care officers. And our contract has been for many years to have three full-time animal care officers here in the city. And I did ask them those questions. Well, I'm hearing reports from the council and the community members that they're not seeing the three full-time officers. And I just wanted to verify their hours and days. And they, they told me that the three full-time officers are supposed to be here in Indio from seven-thirty to five o'clock, seven days a week. And I told them, I, I'm, that's not, that's not what I'm hearing from the community. And so I, they are requesting a, a new contract. And so we were going to bring that to the council for consideration at our next meeting on June eighteenth. We can, I asked them to come down as well so we could have that discussion with them.
And we also need to ask them for the GPS of their vehicles. If they do tell us that they've been here, GPS their vehicles for that. And if they don't, we'll, Public Records request it. But I want to see the GPS. If they tell us they have three officers here, I want to see the three officers trucks are going through our city from those hours. If not, then we need to cut back.
And Mayor, I did, I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, there's just some logistical things and I'm just going to go back. And, and council, Mayor Pro Tem Holmes was at, at the beginning, at the time, with another council member as, as an ad hoc committee trying to troubleshoot it. And they did their best. But we haven't really looked at the contract since then. And since then, you're the third liaison that's worked with them. And my statements to you the other day, I know the, the city manager was busy and we had that lengthy discussion. From a management point, yes, there is three assigned. The problem is there's no weekly communication. We don't know if they're there. So even if you GPS them, there's no weekly communication. I've dealt with the three that they've changed with them from time to time. And the services from the animal control officers are good, but it's when they get to the shelter that becomes a problem. Also, the citizens making phone calls and animals laying that have been deceased, staying over the weekend when it's not a workday. The mayor himself has brought it to my attention and even Mayor Pro Tem has brought it to my attention. Again, this is before you and even before the city manager. But the problem is, we have contracts and we don't check up on them. That was my same discussion with Desert Rec. We need to have an update either quarterly or every six months. We need to know how many animals are picked up. We need to know how many animals are returned home. We need to know how many dead animals are picked up, how many that are reported. There needs to be that data in order for us to justify. So if we had all that information now, we would be able to do it. There's no communication with the city police department, none. They, they, it's just like anybody else. But the problem is this, our services, including your office and the city manager's office, get the blunt of it along with the council members. And all we can do is, well, there's three out there. So for the, again, we're getting a bill, we need it broken down. And, and maybe we need to have those talks with them because, yes, they're serving a very large city. But a couple of things came into play. Every animal would be chipped. So if we identify the animal, they get a freebie to go home the first time. The second time, there'd be a charge because there's education in order to help it. The other thing that I heard from the residents is there was a challenge with euthanizing the animals. That they wanted to make sure there was a coming. Well, with the coming that's administered, which is a shot that's given to the animal, there's a cost to it. And I told them, well, you have city, seven cities that are contracted, plus the county services. Is that the feeling of all the seven contracts? What is the need of the rest of them? Because their needs might be different than ours. And when we do have animal control working in the City of Indio, do they have mutual aid agreements like we do with the fire? Do they go to Coachella and La Quinta? Because those are their contracts. And what do they do in the unincorporated areas? Are our staff being pulled away there? So there's more than just, we just need three and we need to just GPS it. That data is important because then we can make some sound decisions from our end moving forward.
Councilmember, very timely comments on that. I have relayed a lot of that to the county animal services as well. And we can have that discussion with them with the presentation of their proposed contract at the next council meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you. Yeah, you speak up.
I mean, just, I, I've called on Saturdays. No one's there, but Sunday's really surprised me. Seven days a week? Seriously? There is not a single chance I've seen anybody on a Sunday. Everybody knows you can't call animal control. Everybody knows that if there's a dead animal in the street, not to call animal control on a Sunday in particular, because they won't come out until Monday. So I, I just found that comment to be very, very interesting on their behalf. So just my, my two cents.
Thank you.
Fortunately, as John mentioned, the staff will be here. So you'll get to address the county staff directly. Perhaps that request, Mayor, may even be more impactful in person for that type of information. Some of it, we're gathering from them, but if there's anything lacking, I think this is a great forum to put them on, on the spot, so to speak.
It's just, some of these funds, I understand, and animals are a big part of, of this city. And, and we want to make sure we take care of it. With Can, you know, with Kim Hardy, we, we do stuff in that. We pay our fair share in that. But if, if it's going to continue to go up, we got to get the services we're going to get. It's, at least with fire, you know, we know what we're getting. This here, they're telling us they're getting someone, and we all know we're not getting it, which makes it even more difficult when they ask for more money. So, you know, a hundred thousand dollars here, a hundred thousand dollars there, it adds up after a while. And we got other things we could utilize it for that would make the community of, City of Indio a better place to live. So if they're getting it for it, we'll pay for it, but they're going to prove to us that they're doing. So I'm, thank you for bringing them to us. We'll, we'll have this discussion with them. Please.
You had no idea.
So with the final slide for, regarding the changes with general fund, the two, other than the other changes, the significant ones that may stand out are the one for police field services, as well as Measure X police field services. That was again, through just review of overall reconciliation of the positions within each department. And this is ensuring that all positions are fully funded and as stated, within your authorized position listing. And then you also see Measure X was adjusted by three-hundred thousand. And that was just a correlation, that was significant correlation between the anticipated revenue to match the transfers out that we will be doing for all our Measure X commitments. And this just gives you an overview of basically on the general fund appropriations by department or by category, more or less. If I put every single department, it wouldn't be a pretty high chart here. But here outlines what, what departments and are basically divisions would be within those categories. Showing significantly, police protection is the one that carries the majority of the weight within the general fund.
Yeah, absolutely.
We had a question. Like when we look at our police protection, do we, do we look around? I know this is part of the hiring process as well, so, but part of it is do, like, do we look around and see like, what is competitive wages? What, what are we, what can we do to, for, for retention? What can we do for the hiring process within our budget? I mean, looking at the budget now, we understand that it's, takes a significant portion of our budget. Nonetheless, I, I, I think doing some studies, maybe they've already been done, on how we can, you know, enhance our hiring process and retention with some of our officers. You know, we, we know we're a growing city, but we also have to grow in that area as well. So how could we look in the next few years? What can we do?
Absolutely. Usually it's conducted as we start off the, the negotiations, the discussions with, with each of the bargaining units. And that took place this last year where the bargaining units and the staff, led by our Human Resources Director, was a very collaborative effort in selecting people from individual units and looking at the various classifications, the number of the cities, the comparable cities that should be used. So it's a great point and we want to do that every year with enough time to get us some information necessary for those negotiations. So, you know, we're into this current MOU a little ways, but within the next year or so, we'll be back, back at it. Perhaps the chief has something to add to that as well.
Yeah, I do. Mayor, council, I'd just like to kind of point out, as you see on the, on the slide there, there's thirty-six percent. Code enforcement is seven percent of our budget. On top of that, the concert pass-through is ten percent. So the money that we pass through to other agencies, sixteen other agencies to put on the concerts is ten percent of that budget. So the actual budget representation would actually be nineteen percent of, of our general budget.
Fire's catching up quick.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's good to hear. I just, you know, just think that, you know, moving along, we, just to keep an eye on that within our budget, on how we can be competitive, you know.
So, good, Tom?
Well, I had two points. When was the police department? And you also have to understand that in the last seventeen years, from the last recent, from the economical challenges, we're finally where we were seventeen years ago. It's taken seventeen years to recruit from unfortunate layoffs, early retirements and all that, and the quality of staffing and the recruitment. We've done tremendous on the, getting recruits from the community. The challenge is that seventeen years ago, in the current time, our salaries didn't meet up. And I know that staff has been trying to bring salaries where they're competitive. But we still have staff in some areas that make two dollars less than the person ordering food at In-N-Out hamburger when you drive up. We have some support staff there. And it's kind of hard to bring everybody up at once where they need to be. But there's staff that makes less than some others. But it's not something that grew right now. This is over a period of time. And catching up to doing that has also been a challenge. The other one is the fire department. Love the fire department. We, we can't do without our fire department. And I've had talks with Chief White, we had a really good discussion some time ago in general to keep informed. But we just got another bill. And my understanding, do we know what our bill's been increased in the last five years with our contract? Do you know where we are today, where we were five years ago? Right now, it's twenty-three million, where we were five years ago. My understanding, it's grown by six million?
Six or seven.
Six or seven million in five years. And I know that the most recent bill that's been explained by the city manager's office, we just received another one-point-four. And it's anticipated that for the next three years, it'll be another million plus. So that's one of the reasons that during our study session and during our strategic planning was, we need to be sitting down and really think about where, what are we doing? Because we need those services and they're not going to go away. We need fire. That's why continuously have been saying, before I retired, and we'll say it again today, they need to be on the top ten of our listing, not as a secondary. They're, they're listed as a secondary. They're always listed as an afterthought. There's no breakdown in any of our documents. And it's a big bill. If you look at the, at our org chart, they're down here. So the general public needs to see that they're top of that bill. They're the second most expensive investment that we have. That's what I'm getting at, is that as we lobby to try to do things and work with our budgets, we need to treat them that way. We just built a brand-new headquarters fire station. It's a state-of-the-art. We put a lot of money. There's a brand-new ladder truck coming. It's going to have to be on the road. We're going to have a reserve ladder truck. We still have to talk about that. And our ambulance services, because they do a great job. The thing is, we're, we're getting our money's worth, but we have to kind of treat it that way. It can't just be in the box off to the corner. And so we need to show what great work they're doing, but it's, it's not going to get any cheaper. So I just think that it's important for us to know that. And it's important for the, to see the public what we're faced with. It's a bill that we're getting really from the state, funneled through the county, directly to the City of Indio. And we're not the only contract city with that system. Coachella and La Quinta being our neighbors. And our services from our, our city go to both travel governments, twenty-nine and Cabazon. We respond as our primary fire service for medical at times and definitely fire. So we have a big responsibility. So just, those are my points.
Thank you, Mr. Kachron. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Mr. Furman?
I'll, I'll just follow up with some of my comments too, along with the city manager. Same spirit as I talked about with public safety. Looking at our positions within city hall as well to not only retain, but attract some more positions. And I know we're talking about dollars, right? Where do these dollars come from? I don't know. I hope the tourism industry helps us out. But I'd just like to see too, within our, our city hall, our staff is, is well taken care of. And I appreciate Ms. Walla's comment on being very conservative as far as looking at our festivals and things like that. Because we don't want to just rely on those things. And so I appreciate, I appreciate that work, but we always want to take care of our employees. So I, I appreciate that as well. But that's one of the things that, you know, the next couple of years, looking at our positions within city hall, our planning department, public works, things like that, positions that we need to fill. And we want those same folks to continue the vision. When we're all gone, we'd like to have some of those folks still be here continuing this vision. So that's it. End of my syllabus.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Walla, go ahead.
Thank you.
And then this is just to give you the overview of how the general fund is broken down by the different types of services and the salaries and just by the category, debt, internal service fees that are attributed as far as contingency, and then just operational costs in general. And then here we have Measure X. Simple distribution of Measure X, again, revenue in, revenue out of eighteen-point-three million. And these are the commitments that are assumed within the budget. Five million for the streets and roads. Five million and additional contribution set aside of five million for a total of currently within the, the capital plan is ten-point-six million altogether for the PD admin, PD headquarters building. Debt service obligations, that's an increase this year, as I stated earlier, at seven-point-eight now for Measure X. And then this is just the net proceeds of Measure X that will be transferred to Measure X Capital Fund, which we've, was set up last year and we're trying to funnel where we just properly just kind of keep Measure X dollars all in one place and then have that availability to, to move them. But these dollars are, as we get to the capital and discuss that, you know, they're pretty much tied up within our capital plan as, as aggressive as it is. Again, small spreadsheet. But again, this then goes to the internal service funds. And I thought it would be important to highlight these here, just to give you an idea of what actually transpired that drove some of those downward adjustments post the May seventh study session. And you can see here that there was just reallocations of funding that we recognized that we would offset, ensuring that the total operating account and fund was in align. And then backing out any one-time costs that we're moving forward. And then these are the offsetting expenditures that we have. The biggest one is the CAD, CAD RMS. That was something I worked with Ian on in terms of, he had his big project in there of eight-point-nine million. And I kind of took, took more than I should have from him. So we introduced that back in, in there. So the offset was, it's nine-hundred thousand in total, but five-hundred-and-fifty, that was the additional. So the net adjustment was the, the thirty-three that you see there. And now we get to the authorized positions and funded positions. And so we'll talk a little bit about this. And it does, it does change. And, you know, it was kind of, we've been trying to get a handle on how do we count bodies and, and counting the bodies. So this did change. If you saw in twenty-twenty-four, what I footnoted there was that when I presented this on May seventh, it was three-hundred-and-forty-nine. But we've made some adjustments there in reconciling position, most particularly part-time positions. Because when we're talking about full-time equivalencies, you know, we're counting them as one and had some inconsistencies. And then we were counting interns and weren't counting interns and fellows and so forth. So this, this sheet here actually excludes all interns and fellows from that program because we don't know at any given time. We do have in the budget, we're staffed, we are budgeted for at least twelve part-time interns and fellows. So six first part of the year and six for the second part. interns and fellows, so six first part of the year and six for the second part of the year. But again, all depending on the pool and availability of funding. But they aren't captured in, in these numbers here. But, and in total, you see that there's five part-times at, counting at half FTE, that's ten authorized part-time positions included there. And we have two hundred and ninety-eight of full-time authorized positions, all inclusive. And for a complete list of that, you can find it on page one seventy-three. And here we get to this overall summary of the general fund. So we have one, one hundred and twenty-nine point eight million in general fund budget with offsetting revenue of operating revenue of one hundred and twenty-three point seven, which puts us at six point one. Again, this is the six point nine million that we talked about in terms of anticipating of rollover costs and ending fund balance as of June thirty, twenty twenty-five. So what that puts us at point eight. Looking at continuing our ongoing contributions to our reserve fund of five, of half a million, which puts us continuously, puts us at fifteen million. And we did talk about that briefly at the study session and probably looking at a different approach to that. However, I want to highlight in that operating budget that you see above there and the one twenty-nine point eight is a continued effort with commending city council, most of all, for contributions to, of one point five million to the OPEB and one million to our PARs pension trust. So that, that is also assumed there. Those are one-time costs that we have been able to work into the budget. So those are assumptions that are also included here. And that concludes on the general fund and the citywide on, on terms of that. If there are any questions here.
Any questions? No?
We're going to move forward for the India Water Authority. Nothing significant changed in terms of revenue. We didn't make any adjustments. I did want to commend and note that, you know, successfully passed the rate, they're moving forward with the rate increase. This is not assumed in, in this factor here, so we will see an adjustment there come through. But overall, anticipated revenues are in line with what the actual water rate study had in line at twenty-four point eight million. And here we have the proposed expenditures overall for the Water Authority at thirty-six point seven, and it's all inclusive with the ten million of capital and one point five million for vehicle replacement and then considering all other operational costs. And in line, they are considered in balance, but they are using fund balance. Of course, that's the transfers in and out of within, from, for capital projects. And then we talk about the capital plan. That concludes IWA. Is there any questions?
Any on water?
Okay.
Thank you.
So in terms of the capital plan, so the capital plan itself will be presented to city council on June eighth, twenty twenty-five via public hearing, according to the mitigation fee act. The, the capital improvement plan tied to development impact fees does require a public hearing as via an annual adoption as well. So within the budget, you do have the assumed city expenditure plan of two hundred and five million and the India Water Authority capital plan of fourteen million. Within your capital plan, the most significant projects, other than there are a lot of rollover projects and there are detail within your packet in terms of a summary sheet with all the outlined projects. But the most significant that we talked about was, one, the PD headquarter build, headquarters building, that's embedded, as well as we have in that two oh five is funding for Monroe and trying to be aggressive as much as possible. And so that two oh five is, is significant. And we have been working actively between public works and city manager to ensure that we have the funding that we need, one, to meet our current needs and as well as meeting these future demands that we are anticipating, especially of the unknown for the Monroe interchange project. So at this point, our resources are very limited for any new projects, and so we are working with those confines. We are, although we are setting aside funds, we are also aware with ongoing projects, those commitments may have to be downward adjustments if ongoing projects have other commitments, change orders or so forth that come through. But we'll continue to evaluate that and follow that closely. Any questions in regards to?
Thank you.
And that concludes the detailed presentation in terms of all the activity for the overall budget. Again, a citywide budget at four hundred and fifty-nine million, general fund budget of one hundred and twenty-nine, India Water Authority of thirty-six million. So what we are asking this evening, if approved, recommending council's approval. So resolution one zero four nine two, to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six operating and capital budget for the city of India. Resolution number one zero four nine three, determining and establishing the city of India's appropriations limit for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Resolution number one zero four nine four will be deferred to Jennifer as she has to call in a few items into the record.
Thank you so much. I do need to read a whole bunch of numbers into the record, thanks to the Brown Act. So these are the, the salary schedules for certain positions. The first one is the assistant city manager. The minimum salary is fifteen thousand eleven dollars, maximum salary is twenty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. This is obviously a month. Next is police, assistant police chief. Minimum salary is twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, maximum is twenty thousand fifty dollars. Chief building official, ten thousand three hundred thirty-six, ten thousand three hundred sixty-three, I'm just luckless, so this is fun, dollars, minimum, maximum is fifteen thousand three hundred eleven. Chief of police, minimum salary is thirteen thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars, maximum is twenty-one thousand six hundred thirteen. City engineer, minimum is eleven thousand four hundred fifty, maximum is eighteen thousand one hundred and two. Next, we have deputy city manager, ten, thirteen thousand nine hundred sixty-three, maximum salary is twenty-one thousand six hundred thirteen. Next is director of community development, minimum salary thirteen thousand nine hundred sixty-three, maximum twenty thousand fifty. Next, we have a director of city clerk services, minimum salary eleven thousand four hundred fifty, maximum eighteen thousand one hundred and two dollars. Next is director of economic development, minimum is twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, maximum is twenty thousand fifty dollars. Next is director of finance, minimum salary is twelve thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars, maximum is twelve thousand fif, excuse me, twenty thousand fifty dollars. Next, director of HR and risk management, minimum twelve thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars, maximum twenty thousand fifty dollars. Next, director of information technology, eleven thousand four hundred fifty dollars, maximum eighteen thousand one hundred and two dollars. I think lastly, we have director of public works, minimum is twelve thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars, maximum is twenty thousand fifty dollars. Oh, just joking, there's one more. We have a general manager of the India Water Authority, minimum is fifteen thousand eleven dollars, maximum is twenty-three thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars. That concludes the salaries that need to be read into the record pursuant to the Brown Act. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one more item to add when, for approving one oh four nine four, is that there is one change to that classing comp schedule to add the position of economic development coordinator to that. And then we have resolution twenty twenty-five sixteen, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget for the India Housing Authority. Resolution number twenty twenty-five eighty-two, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget for the India Water Authority. And then resolution number twenty twenty-five zero two, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, six, sorry, budget for the India Electric Finance Authority.
A tip?
Yep. Now it works.
All right. Comments, questions, concerns? Anyone?
I just have one quick comment. I, one of the things that we, you know, Ruby mentioned about some of our capital improvement projects and, you know, we're, we're at a line right there. And I might, I think I spoke to the city manager about this, and maybe it doesn't even have to be budgeted. I just think through the year or maybe every two years, I think as a council or mayor and, and mayor pro temp start to visit some of our officials in Washington DC and Sacramento and talk about these projects and funding in their office, right? Sometimes a lot of us travel with different committees that we're on, and so that kind of helps us in that, right? But, you know, you know, we have some of our congressmen around here who are different committees. We have senators around here, we have, and so if we, you know, you show up and you say, hey, India's here to talk about the Monroe Bridge project, it, it really shows that elected official how important it is to us. And I just think as, you know, a council, you know, we start, you know, doing stuff like that. So I don't know if it needs to be allocated in the budget. Maybe it's not enough to be there. But I just think it's a good way of open line communication to communicate with those folks who have, who sit at those tables in those meetings when it talks about dollars. Because, yeah, we're, we're in a good shape and I thank our staff for that, but we could, we could always use more. And I, and I think we're entitled to more, right? So that's just a comment that, that I have.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you. I think we do have a, an opportunity, I think, with the relationships we have to be able, hopefully, at the state and federal level, to be able to talk to a few people, even if it's, you know, a million here, a million there, it takes, you know, some of the pressure off some of our other stuff or use that funding for other things. So it's a wise investment for three or four thousand dollars to go up and let them know how important some of these things are. And sometimes it's just being in front of them. It's the last person sitting at that table across from them that gets that extra funding. So I do agree with you. Anyone else? Mr. Ortiz?
What's our travel fund looking like at the moment?
For the, for the city council, roughly allocated four thousand dollars for each of you throughout the year, but it kind of slides back and forth, you know, coordinate that with the mayor. So there are adequate funds there for some trips to DC, Sacramento, as well as the visits, of course, locally when possible. So, so the funding is there.
And, and also, I mean, even, you know, if, say we're up in Sacramento and Tim goes with us, Tim could talk about nuts and bolts, or even Ruby, nuts and bolts of some of these projects with some of those folks. And so I just think it's this opportunity, I think something we should start doing, so.
Tim just talks about pavement.
Yeah.
Loves that pavement. Mr. Gitan?
No, the only thing is, we didn't touch on it as much. We know there's money being invested is still with our parks. We talked about having a, a master plan regarding our parks, and we have a really big park. And kind of following in line with council member Wayne Furman is, we have this big sports park. And it's not going to continue to look the way we have it if we don't pay more attention in having either continue to seek funds from our legislators for these open parks and park spaces, because our community is really wanting to see, they're going to see great, but they also have the other parks they want to see just as good. And I think if we're going to have these travels, we need a, we need a map to tell us what that's going to look like besides open, because we have the monies, obviously, to build them, but we need the monies to maintain them.
Yeah. And, and I think as time goes on, and we're going to find out that all these buildings we're building and these parks we're building are going to cost a lot to maintain. Not as much now, but still, you got to do the proper maintenance, just like your car. You have to change the oil filter. You have to do the other stuff. The same with this. We, if we want it to be neat and clean, we've got to have people come in and clean it. We've got to change the filters when we have to. We have to do all the extra work with our landscape and that. So, you know, it's going to cost us more for the newer stuff to keep it how it's supposed to be, and that's going to cost us extra money. Because I, I imagine when our sports park opens up, we're going to go to Davis Field and fix that up to whatever it needs to be, because now we have an opportunity to pull the kids off and take them to the other field. So they're going to look that to us to be able to put that. So we're going to have to start coming up with some other funding to be able to maintain some of these things we have, which is going to be, like I said, very expensive, especially just maintenance of the new city hall compared to the city hall we have now. The cleaning staff, the, the supplies, the other stuff that we have. And the new police station is, you know, we're going to have two instead of one. So, you know, we just got to keep budgeting that and make sure we do, because if not, it'll come back to bite us later. So we've got, any other questions or comments, concerns? Thank you, Ruby, for all your staff work and everything you've done. It's very comprehensive, very easy for us to follow through and, and look at, and very precise. So thank you and your staff, and all the department heads, actually, because it took everybody to do it. But what do you need from us other than to recommend the, these approvals?
Approval, yes.
With the changes, the items read into record and the
Change.
Other compensation for the one other staffer?
Correct.
Yep.
I'm just assuming that recommendations from our study session were applied into this budget.
Yes. Everything was addressed in terms of staff as far as any maintenance costs or anything that we talked about. Yes.
Thank you.
Well, somebody want to make a motion?
I guess I'll be the one to read. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one zero four nine two, adopting fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating and capital budget for the city of India. Resolution number one zero four nine three, determining and establishing the city of India's appropriation limits for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Resolution number one zero four nine four, approving a citywide classification and compensation plan. And resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating budget for India Housing Authority. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eight two, adopting fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six operating and capital improvement program budget for the India Water Authority and adopting fiscal year twenty twenty-five, I believe that's twenty twenty-six, operating budget for the India Electric Finance Authority. Thank you.
First, we have a second?
Second, Ben.
Second, Mr. Gitan. Please vote. Pass unanimously five zero, and you'll be bringing back the capital improvement and the other stuff at our next meeting?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you.
Very much. With that, we'll move on to our public hearing items, which is thirteen point one, which is acceptance of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, enhancing law enforcement activities, sub-account E L E A S funds in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand and thirty-four dollars, and approval of the enclosed expenditures plan. Mr. Tully, Chief Tully, are you handling this for us, sir?
Yes, mayor, mayor pro temp and city council members, I am going to invite our division chief, Erica Martinez, to present the next item.
All right. Erica, welcome.
Good evening, mayor, mayor pro temp and city council. I'm Erica Martinez. I'm your division chief of support services. The item before you, it's the acceptance of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, enhancing law enforcement activities, sub-account alias, sorry, that's a mouthful, funds in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand and thirty-four dollars and approval of the enclosed expenditure plan. So the recommendation that we have for you from staff is to accept this year's allocation in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand and thirty-four dollars, approve the enclosed expenditure plan, and authorize the city manager to sign the expenditure plan and other relevant documents. Just some summary about this special allocation. It's, it's a disbursement that we get from the Riverside County Sheriff's Department from RSO. So the city gets a monthly allocation to support our frontline services. So the city is proposing to use this allocation to help us fund public safety equipment, supplies, and training and personnel costs. So some historical on this, it goes back to nineteen ninety-six, where the state legislature enacted Assembly Bill thirty-two twenty-nine, which guaranteed that a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars was going to be issued to each locality. So that's our minimum allocation. And if there's any extra revenue that is received by the state every year, then it's reflected as revenue growth. Further, the city has two fiscal years to spend the allocation. So that concludes my presentation to you, if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Mine's just, what is our anticipation and the amounts that we receive this year for the following year? Do you know?
Yes. So this year, we're receiving a hundred and forty thousand, right? I would say our average is about two hundred thousand per fiscal year. So that has been our three-year average.
And the funding that we have now is sustained for what's needed now and as we're growing, correct?
Correct.
Anything else? Any other questions? With that, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on this item?
Thank you.
So do we have anybody in the queue? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing there. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll motion to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, enhancing law enforcement activities, sub-account funds in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand and thirty-four dollars, approve the enclosed expenditure plan, and authorize city manager to sign the expenditure plan and other relevant documents.
First by council member Ortiz, we have a second?
I'll second.
A second by council member Furman, please vote.
Chief, are you going to be able to spend those dollars?
I'm sure I can.
We will be able to.
Pass unanimously five zero. With that, we'll move on to item number fourteen, which is public comments for items not on the agenda. So do we have anybody that we So do we have anybody that wishes to speak?
I have no cards, mayor.
Where's Al Mesa when I need him? So with that, if nobody wishes to speak, then we will adjourn the meeting at six thirty to our next meeting, which is June eighteenth. Please come out. Don't forget, we have food truck Fridays and keep an eye out for some ribbon cuttings we have coming on and our new messenger robots from the concerts are out there. So please, a lot of things going on in the city of India. Have a safe rest of your week. Good night.